Todd, we're going to give us an update with the new language in the with the ordinance, with the proposed ordinance, the draft language there. So with that, if y'all could take it away.
Am I the only one who can share a screen?
I think anybody can, Andy.
Yeah, should be able, anybody should be able to.
You put it up there, Todd. I remembered to start the webinar and record this morning too, so we actually.
Real thing going on. My screen just went blank. Is it up?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's weird. Everything just is black, but as long as you can see it. So what we did here, there were three components.
Todd, it's cropped off a little bit on the left. Maybe you just got multiple screens and you don't have it completely. There you go.
Is that centered? Again, I can't see. Is that centered?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry about that. There's some kind of technical. See if I can get my screen open. No, still won't. Anyway, and so there were three components to this. The first is this section here where we went back in and re-instated that townhomes and multifamily will continue to be allowed in the residential districts where they were previously allowed. So basically this in effect is no change because the pending ordinance struck those, but now we'll just leave them like they are. So multifamily and townhomes are continued to be allowed in the districts where they were previously allowed, which is RM two, three, and four.
It looks, it looks like on there, Todd, it says three, three point five and four is where you've got the conditional. Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, it doesn't look like in RM two doesn't have it as conditional where the red is. Is it somewhere else?
Say that again, please, Bob.
We need to put it so you've got it like under RM two. You said RM two, I think.
And that was a misspoke. We don't allow multifamily is RM one and two only allow duplexes and patio homes.
Right. Okay. Good deal. So it's just RM three, three point five and four.
Correct.
No change there is basically what we're doing.
So then the second part was the mixed use and that under residential, we had, it used to be mixed use were allowed in CCM CP one and CP two. We struck that a dash in our table means not allowed. And then we put a end note to say that they would be allowed as part of a plan development. So that's pretty straightforward. Any questions about those use tables? Cause that's the overarching thing. The first thing in any zoning district is we determine all those uses that are allowed. And then we get into the standards by which they are allowed. But the first part is, are they even allowed? So this addresses that townhomes and multifamily are allowed like they used to be and mixed use are not allowed unless they are part of a plan development. So then we got into the.
Hey Todd, real quick, Fran has his hand up.
Todd, a quick question. What, what, what are those houses being built on the corner of Cambridge and 93 considered? Those multifamily townhomes? What, what are those?
They're townhomes.
So we would continue to allow those kinds of developments in residential neighborhoods?
That's RM three and that, that, that has continued to be allowed.
Yeah. So I, I think we might want to circle back. I know that's not the purpose of today, but every time I drive by there, I just wonder if that's a good use for that land and residential land. But that's more for later. I know that wasn't the intent for today.
Okay. Well, just let me know at any point you would like to discuss it or what I can provide to help you weigh in on that.
Elaine has her hand up now as well.
Now, I just wanted to ask Todd if anywhere in that language, there are density, maximum density requirements are allowed?
Yes, they're already in the, in the district standards for our, for our residential districts. We already have the density standards, the same ones that have been established.
Okay. And then PDs are not going to have a density standard?
Correct. That with a plan development that, well, they will have density standards Elaine, but we don't prescribe what they will be prior, or at least we never have prior to a PD, because the whole purpose of the PD is for the planning commission and council to determine what is the appropriate density for that particular PD. So that is historically and intentionally done on a case by case basis. And so determining what a, a limit is for any particular plan development ahead of time would, would seem to hamstring the planning commission and council because you have the complete authority to determine what that is on a case by case basis.
And so you don't anticipate any problem about one developer saying this other developer put this many in a PD, but you're not letting me?
No, well, they may say that, but it doesn't matter because y'all have complete control over it, that it's your decision. And my guess would be that, that, that in each case, there were factors that led y'all to determine what the appropriate density is. And the densities for our PDs throughout the city are all different. And so any developer who's ever done a PD would, I think, be braced for the fact that, and they really wouldn't care. They don't care what other people are doing. They want to know what can happen with their PD and that, that y'all would work together to determine what those standards are on a case by case basis.
Okay. Thank you.
So we got the use tables for residential and for multifamily and townhomes and then mixed use. And then the third component is the actual PD district regulation language. And that as I received comments about the things that y'all wanted to address in these overlay districts that I was figuring out how at this stage, when we don't really know what those overlay districts are going to be or what the, the standards or intentions of each of those districts are at this point, that what I did was I added a few things to this ordinance. One that where Fran had recommended that all PDs regardless of where they are shall conform to the city's vision and value statement. So I added that. And then, and then I took all of the other recommendations or concerns that had been expressed related to the overlay districts, which would be in the CCM CP two and CP one districts. So those would be for any PDs that contain mixed use buildings that they would then conform to, to these followings. All these issues would be addressed. The reason I didn't say that they shall be or must be done is two reasons. One is that if you make it an absolute, then you've taken away the flexibility of council and commission to decide on a case by case basis. And two, that honestly, that for, for this PD language, you could simply say whatever council wishes. Because it doesn't matter what's said here that, that you can, if there's, if there's something that's in this list that doesn't apply to a particular PD, you don't have to apply it. And there may be things that are not on this list that you want to apply to a plan development and that you have that right. And so the plan developments grant the planning commission and council and citizens ultimately a tremendous amount of latitude in, in what you choose to include, what types of uses, the standards associated with it. We would collectively create those standards on a case by case basis. And my thinking was that here were the things that we wanted a checklist, if you will, of the items that we know we want to consider in every case. It's not, it doesn't limit us to only these and it doesn't force us to use all of these. And then as we develop these catalyst areas and for each catalyst area, we become more clear as to exactly what we hope to occur in there. Then Elaine, that might be where we would set, we could establish some densities where we could establish uses to say, for example, Clemson crossing up there by the by low. That might be an area that historically could have mixed use, but you could say, you could strike that and say, that's not going to be for student housing, or it's not going to be for purpose built student housing, but you may want it at Daniel Square or whatever the outcomes may be. As we determine the standards for each catalyst area, that my, my recommendation would be to then codify it. And what we would do, we would come in and, and have a, the language that I supplied a couple of months ago where it would say that PDs in these areas are, you know, guided by specific standards. See below. And then for catalyst area one, we could then refine this list to those that are most applicable to that particular catalyst area. But for today and for establishing this ordinance, which puts the protections in place that, that y'all are most concerned about, this accomplishes that by addressing these following issues. And these were taken from the original recommendation that this committee provided to the planning commission as well as comments from about a half a dozen of the Clemson next committee who sent Andy specific concerns. And I believe that all of them, in fact, I know all of them are incorporated into this list. And so that would these three sections of code, the two use tables, and then this narrative component of the PD ordinance reflects everything the, the committee has expressed is what they wanted to implement. It does not limit y'all. It provides a tremendous amount of latitude. And that my assumption, which may not be accurate, but my assumption was that as we developed the catalyst area standards and, and refined our objectives for those areas that we would then refine this section of the ordinance with specifics related to each catalyst area.
Todd, I think that's right, Todd. So David has his hand up.
Well, Elaine had hers up first.
Okay.
Sorry. I actually think, but I'll go ahead and ask my quick question. In that reference that, that number seven right there, the city may require purpose built student housing regulations and standards. Do we know what those are? Or will you add those?
Yeah, that two thoughts on that, that, that I, I would have to say generally, no, we don't know what they are. Because we, we have staff presented y'all with a, a set of standards or some, you know, a recommended definition of it, which is generally what we've heard all, all of us have sort of used the same similar language. So it exists and that whether or not that needs refining or adding to or clarifications, I'm sure that discussion will take place. And that, so we have a foundation upon which to build. And then once the city decides that this is what we determine as purpose built housing, and these are the standards and regulations associated with it, then wherever it applies, we can just grab that and include it. But right now we have a definition of it, which is, is on the shared drive that was submitted, I think in January or February.
For the purpose built student housing?
Correct.
Okay. Would some language there be helpful to have something like that? Would be the only place you can create housing that rents by the bedroom?
That one Elaine, I'm not certain that we have the ability to do that. In talking to Mary and others that the for the city to determine how you are contracting with others is, is slippery. So we're not sure that we can deny a person to rent by the bed. But the, the, the standards as they exist or what we have proposed focused on the actual physical development of the site of, of the property to where, you know, each bedroom must have its own bathroom. They all enter onto a centralized area and that, that there's no additional bathroom, that there's, there's no bonus room or anything like that. The types of things that might be more attractive to non-students, you know, a more traditional living and that, that, and this is language that I've heard members of this committee use. And that is when we've been looking at this over the last year or so, that the, the language we have found in other ordinances. So it's, it's, it's focused, the, the standards are focused on the actual built space, not the now, not saying Elaine, that, that we wrestle this issue to the ground to where I'm certain that we cannot deny people the right to rent by the bedroom, but so far the initial research would indicate that that is fraught with challenges. Overseeing it, enforcing it, illegally defending it are the main ones. And if someone else said that they would, it's a pretty easy one to work around too. That we could say you can't rent by the bed. Well, then they just lease it to one person and they, they create a, there'll be a whole cottage industry of people who are, you know, you sign the lease, but here are the subcontracts you have with the other people and everybody's renting by the bed. The key part we thought was building these, which in a manner which is consistent with those that are renting by the bed and, and would lend themselves to student housing.
David? Yeah. All right. So there's, there's several of these conditions under I in May that I think should be removed and be absolute. And well, first one is two. So where student housing is allowed, a maximum occupancy shall be set. And it should be pulled out of this May. Fees deter, and annual inspections be required with fees determined to cover the cost of those inspections. I mean, that should be in every, every, that should be an absolute in every place where purpose built student housing is allowed, PD or not. So I don't think that should be a May. I think that should be a, a, a shall. And because the whims of city council and, and elections and changes and, and things like that means that we would have potentially a differential expectation on different projects for that. And so then I think also the, the number seven should be pulled out and should be a shall that's related to that. And then finally, I think it's number nine, the bottom one. I think all PDs should absolutely have a BAR review process because again, my criticism of PDs, the way we've implemented them here in Clemson is they're simply zoning ordinances for a particular parcel or development project. And to me, it's the, the true potential of PD is to kind of find creative solutions that are not, that are more than zoning that are about building form, characters, setbacks, quality, you know, high, all those things should be, should be part of the PD process that we should not be simply approving a PD based on a zoning ordinance requirements. So those three things I think should come out of the May and should absolutely be in the shall.
For everybody else in the committee, would you be comfortable if I just created a J and just say the following issues, concerns shall be required? And then take those three items and move them down to J?
What is J?
He's gonna be the, make a new J.
Be the new category.
Yeah, I would make the required I and make the maybe's H or J. You know what I'm saying? In sequence so that you get the required stuff first and then the.
Now, now David, with your, with your last one there, number one gets at that a bit. PDs must conform to the vision, goals, size, character, use, architectural outline for those districts.
That's wishy washy though, Bob. That's, that's aspirational. That's not requirements, right? And again, how we.
Well, the requirements will be outlined for each of those catalyst areas will have those, those things outlined for them. So when we say catalyst area one, here is the vision values, you know, character, use, architectural standards, blah, blah, blah.
We're talking about PDs in the CM district, right? And so they may or may not be in the catalyst areas. And I'm just saying for all PDs irrespective of whether they're in a catalyst area or not, that they should A, include architectural review. B, that all student housing, no matter where it's put, should, should have, have these things, whether it's in or out of a PD, right? Does that make sense?
So it should be PD, PDs in all, in all commercial in CCM CP one, CP two districts.
Yeah. But I mean, I'm just saying pull those things out of the May for a PD, put them into a must. And, and, and so that we, A, we have the finances to enforce inspections that we have, that we have, that we actually require inspections on all purpose built student housing in this PD and elsewhere. That all PDs have architectural review and that their PD is considered as a part, the architectural review is considered as a part of the PD approval, in my opinion. And and then again, that we, we, that there will be purpose built student housing regulations and standards. I just think that if we make that on a case by case basis, those have, those have nothing to do with limiting the, the freedom to creatively form a PD. But they have everything to do with protecting us from, you know, skirting the, the, the intentions based on a case by case interpretation of the vision, goal, size, character of that.
Are we, is everybody comfortable with pulling some of those things out and having those as the, in, in a must category? Any objections to that? All right. Fran has his hand up.
And this, this may be the same point David was making, but more generally, I, I don't, I don't understand why we need to differentiate or even specify at any point, this is for catalyst and overlay districts. What happens? Why, why not just take that out? And this may be David's point. And these are the requirements for all PDs. And I'm not clear unless we decided not to do it anymore. Why we're differentiating on occasion only PDs and overlays and catalyst areas. David, were you suggesting we take that out all the time, which makes sense to me? I don't understand why we need it, but maybe we do.
Well, and I guess, I, I mean, yeah, I, I was more narrowly focused, but I agree with you. PDs should be uniformly enforced wherever they are, in, in my opinion, right? So now the only thing is that, you know, when we didn't talk about the acreage and the size, we may allow smaller PDs in the commercial district, or we may allow smaller TPDs anywhere. But, but you know, that, that would be maybe a differentiator in a, in the commercial and the CCM district.
Yeah. Some of these things y'all are already in the ordinance. For example, that the characteristics shall, you know, meet our zoning ordinance, land regs and the city's vision and value statement. This is true for all PDs. And that we already have these standards for all PDs, maximum lot area, the densities, the maximum occupancy, the heights, open space. All this is outlined that they will be determined. And that we already have acreage standards in place for in general that, but as we develop the catalyst areas that each one of those may differ from the, the standards that apply citywide. And remember, not all PDs are going to have mixed use in it. You know, Patrick Square is an example. There's no mixed use over there. It's all, you know, it's either single family or commercial. And I don't know that faculty may have, they have some mixed use planned for their downtown area. But anyway, so the standards, a lot of these standards already exist, but these were ones that y'all specifically wanted to cite in regard to the catalyst areas. One other thing I would like.
I think, but I, but I think Todd, if I remember, our discussions really, in this case, were not specifically the catalyst overlays. This really was to replace the temporary ordinance and protect all the areas in the city of Clemson. So I don't think that our context for this, if I remember correctly, was just the overlaying catalyst. I think the context was to replace the pending ordinance and provide protection for all neighborhoods. Similarly, regardless if they're overlay. So that's what I'm saying, unless there's a real reason for it to say overlaying catalyst, I think that limits the future because who knows what's going to happen unnecessarily. And I really don't think that our discussions on this was primarily the catalyst overlay. I think it was done the same day, but I think it was related to protecting all neighborhoods, not just those. So my suggestion is unless there's a real specific thing, and I can't think of what that would be, that we delete those, those words from all of these.
Fran, I think, I think this, okay? So one, once we make this for all commercial districts that we have, it, it works. So we can, and the idea is that by, by saying the catalyst areas, then we're giving ourselves the additional layer where we go in and we have these sections that say catalyst area one, two, three as a way to incentivize and, and push the types of development where we want them. And basically we're saying outside of those catalyst areas, you're not getting, you know, anything approved outside of what this, you know, straight commercial zoning allows. And now in commercial zoning, there would be no way to do housing in commercials, in commercial zoning districts without coming through a PD. So we could say, you know, we could say for all commercial districts, anything that proposes housing needs to come forward as a, as a PD. But also we are going to have these catalyst areas that we are going to create a set of standards and incentives or whatever for development so that we have the language there. So as we come in with catalyst areas later and overlay districts that they, that they apply.
I don't think it's necessary to, to eliminate other areas.
But you, we wouldn't by just saying all commercial areas and, and then indicate that we're going to have catalyst areas as well. So it could say, you know, as it's, I'm sorry, I've got my chat box here. The following issues and concerns may be applicable and required to be addressed for PDs containing mixed use buildings within. So by saying that at the top, it's covered all of our commercial, all of our commercially zoned districts where PD may happen.
No, I, I agree, Bob. But I think once we then start listing items, we revert to specifying catalyst and overlay. I don't understand the value to doing that. What's added to the statement, but that's just my opinion. I know we're a whole group, so.
I, I would, I, I mean, I, I support the idea of separating the requirements for a PD from the provision of requiring a PD in a CM district. Okay. I mean, I think there, you know, we should have uniform standards for PDs across the city in or out of a catalyst area, in or out of a zoning classification that we, we, and that, you know, the, I, I stand. And then, then write the modifications to the CM and the catalyst areas that require, that might set the, the areas of a PD and, and, and might require a PD in a certain zoning. In a certain zoning classification for mixed use. But that the requirements to achieve a PD should be universal and applicable everywhere, okay? Does that make sense?
I'm not sure because the the requirements for a PD for something like Patrick Square are very, very different. There's a whole lot of differences between what I would expect the requirements to be for a Patrick Square PD. Over a Earl Street PD. So I don't know. Out of a PD is that it doesn't have to be universal is because the PD becomes the zoning for that particular area or site.
Again, if we're thinking about PD as a zoning ordinance for a specific site. Then I think we're not thinking about the potential of a PD or the frankly, the opportunities of a PD. And yes, I don't see that there's anything in here that 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 Patrick Square wouldn't require. In fact, Patrick Square is in fact the mixed-use development. It has commercial, it has office, it has residential, it has multifamily, it has institutional occupancy. So so so, you know, I I don't see that there's anything in here. That Patrick Square doesn't comply with, in a sense, or that any PD couldn't comply with or shouldn't comply with. And and so, you know, I think we're, if if someone wanted to put student housing in Patrick Square. Then I think it should be the same, the the same requirements there, you know. And and so, you know, that's that's my point is separate out. I mean, make PDs universal in terms of not not limiting the creativity. But in terms of certain criteria that are absolute across the city that we are all in favor of, right? Or I think we are, in terms of, you know. Understanding where student housing is going, the impact it's going to have and how we manage it. And and if, and then, you know, we still have the specific ordinance that says to build. Mixed use in a commercial district or student housing in a commercial district, then you have to go through the PD process. But the but if if we truly envision the PD as as being this flexible document that's more. Or a process that's more than a zoning ordinance that takes in building form, character, use, setback, buffer. You know, all the height, all those things and gives the developer freedom to creatively explore those things. Present their creative solutions to the planning commission and the city council. And convince us that what they're going to be building is in fact appropriate for their particular parcel. But but I think there's, there has to be certain minimum standards and 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 I think most of those. Most of those are centered around student housing based on this discussion, right? So that would be my opinion.
So so tell me how this how this language doesn't do that or allow us the flexibility.
Well, I'm just saying this language.
To do to do what you're you're saying.
There's two parts to it, okay? This language is good. I just think it should be applied to PD requirements, period, everywhere, all the thing. And then separate out and make it very short and succinct that you have, that you require that do a PD in a CM district. And separate out the requirement to do it from what it is you have to achieve to and and the process you have to go through. To 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 get a PD, okay? So that then it becomes very succinct. You have to do a PD in a CM district. That that we put that in there, okay? Then we have a universal set of standards and guidelines and and boundaries. That that allow for creativity that apply to all PDs, no matter where they are in the in the in the in the city.
Bob, don't don't we have a statement already in here somewhere that says all residential in a C district has to be done through a PD? I thought that was the point of all this. That's separate in this already somewhere? Just that clear statement that says just in those words, that any residential in a C district has to go through the PD process. Is that is that part of what Todd wrote here?
That's number seven, Fran, because only residential allowed in C, in our commercial districts. Is by a mixed-use structure. And so we can, we can say, I mean, this accomplishes exactly what you were referring to, Fran. Because the only residential allowed in the commercial districts are mixed-use structures. We only allow residential as part of a plan development.
And 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 I'm, you know, I'm looking at now Article 5.
Thanks, Todd.
This is the definition of PD everywhere, right, Todd?
That's correct. And most of most of what's on the list is already in here.
Yeah, right, perfect. So you're doing what I said, and that's that's fine. And I I just say get the 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 those three items out of the may. And I would say even one is kind of wishy-washy because.
And we could, we could is already in here. If you look at this. Shall supplant any standards and but conform to the city's visions and values.
Good. Then I don't even know that it needs to be repeated down as one in there because.
I was just putting in what y'all asked me to put in, so I'm okay with leaving it. There's several of these that are, you know, duplicated above, but.
Hey, I think that's number one. I think having written that has a different, more dialed-in.
Okay.
Idea because the city's vision and value statement has a lot of things in it. Some of which have nothing to do with development. So this is as we dial in what we're looking for with, again, in different areas of town. And eventually, maybe it is, you know, we've got this for everywhere that covers everywhere in the city. But we have, we we outline specific for, you know, downtown, for commercial corridors. For, you know, RM 3 and 4 districts, R12 and R20 districts. And we say, you know, any anything and not just PDs, but conform to the vision, goals, size, character, use. Architect for the districts within within the city. Overall, I think we should have those.
That's fine. It's just that there's a contradiction that could be legally legally indefensible. Because it says may and then says must under may. So there's a contradiction there is what I'm saying.
Yeah. So it's not necessarily repetitive. It's dialing in. And yeah, so yeah, we can fix the may and the must issue. As we found out with the ma- mask ordinance, the the hand wringing over shouldn't shells. You know, kind of stuff. So yeah, we need to, we need to get that language right.
So to be clear, that what I would y'all would like me to do is take item two. Item seven and item nine. PD's BAR approval, purpose-built housing will have regulations and standards. And that a maximum occupancy be set and inspections be required. Separate those out from this list and say that those shall be required.
Yes.
And and maybe we take number one.
Yep.
And where Fran's statement is. Conform with the city's vision and value statement. We could put there where overlay districts and other. Something, something to get at that when we have specific standards in other districts. That must conform or comply with the vision, goals, size, character, use, architectural standards outlined. For.
I understand what you're trying to accomplish. Let me let me wordsmith that a little bit and I'll but I'll clean that up. You're talking about here to say outline for those districts designated by the city as catalyst areas or something like that.
Yeah, now and in the future.
Okay. Okay, one thing I want to clarify is that on item two, I'm going to split this into two items. Uh, one is maximum occupancy set. And then the other is annual inspections be required. And I'm assuming by that you mean like, like we do with our existing rental housing program.
Yep.
Okay.
Fees will be set to.
We would need to, we'll have to. Work together through that. There's, uh, there'll be tipping points along the way. That that if we had a, you know, a single building with 100 units in it that are side by side. We may be able to absorb that without additional staff. We we presented council with multiple models over the years of how to. Lasso all multifamily in the city because right now we do not inspect anything but single-family homes and duplexes. And and so none of our triplexes, quads or larger mixed-use buildings, none of those. Are inspected under the rental housing program. We annually inspect the common areas and life safety components of those buildings. Making sure that the sprinkler system works and the exit signs are lit and the doors are unobstructed and things like that. And that's for all commercial properties and multifamily are considered commercial properties. And that in that sense that they generate, they they're they're licensed under the business license, not a rental license. Anyway, so there will come a point as we, if if we make this requirement to where. We've got, I've got a matrix and and formula set up to show different models. Most of them made the assumption that if we were going to require annual inspections for some. Multifamily that we would do it for all. I'm not quite sure how we would separate those out or the pushback we might get on that. And so that's just a conversation to keep in mind we'll need to have as 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 one of these comes forward. To figure out the the logistical and financial component of fulfilling that obligation.
So that would go in the rental rental housing pro- in the rental program really rather than the zoning.
I think so, correct. That's that's where, well, the rec- the requirement is in the appropriate location here. To say that this would, and maybe what I would say would that that where student housing allowed. Is that it will be in the rental housing program. And but then we would have to modify the rental housing program to encompass mixed use. And if we encompass it for mixed use, is it only for certain buildings or is it for all mixed use? Uh, and again, that that we've, we can at some point present council with. Maybe it will maybe have a little workshop and we can bring the new council members up to speed with. The various models and impacts and pros and cons of doing the rental housing in in different fashions. And the impacts of what's included and what's not included. But I just wanted to put that out there that that's something we'll have to wrestle to the ground. Should we get a PD coming forward that this requirement would apply.
Okay, all right. Other other questions and comments for Todd on this. Todd, can we put this in the in the Google Drive?
Yeah, if you'll allow me a little bit of time this morning, I will make these tweaks that have been requested. I'll clean that up and and try to figure out what a spatus is. I don't know what. Clean that up, but um, and and then, yeah, I'll I'll what I'll do is I'll put it in the Google Drive, but I'll also send it to this group. And so y'all will have it. And then I'm also going to probably go ahead and send it to the planning commission. They they wanted it by, we committed to get it to them by Monday, but I think that this means we're done with it for now. And and so we'll probably get it on out to them this week.
Hey, Todd, could you, for for number eight, could you say may require a partial outfit? And or signed lease agreements. For commercial spaces for a a portion of commercial spaces prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And see, we'll need to see what Mary thinks about that. But.
So you want me to put that as portions?
Partial outfit and signed lease agreements for a portion. Of commercial spaces prior to issuance of a.
CEO. Yeah, and I'm pretty sure that one's already been decided that that we, that a city cannot force another person into a contract. So but I'll put it in there for now and we can tweak it later because it won't really come to battle until.
Right.
We have a, we have one before, so we've got some time to vet that. But if you want that language in there, I'll put it in.
Yeah, let's see how it goes because then, you know, again, it's it's more just making the developers be serious about. Filling space, filling.
We've got a, on Mon- on the 10th, the planning commission, I've I've been. Communicating with Mayor Halfaker and Andy and others. And we've kind of got a starting point for some language that we think is legal and applicable. To address that issue. It would not require a a contract. But it does, but I I don't want to waste y'all's time with it now, but that discussion will be going on with the planning commission on the 10th. But if you.
Put that, Todd, if you can get this cleaned up, get it into the Google Drive. Let let Shannon know and Shannon can send everyone a link. Just to put eyes on it again. And if there's any additional feedback that anyone has. Let's have that by Friday afternoon. Otherwise, this will be what goes forward to planning commission and council and public hearing. Some, you know, version of this was what we've talked about today. So after the cleanup. Give a little bit of time to to provide any additional feedback there, okay? All right, thank you. So we left off last week with. With our discussion of the catalyst areas, moving forward. If you remember, we were, I'm sharing my screen. We had gone through, we had talked about catalyst area. I I can't remember the numbers, but 1 on 93 needed a little more study and thought. Catalyst area 2, we were generally accepting of the of the concept there. We were into. The Clemson Triangle and we were, it 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 seemed like we were landing on. The idea that that this one needs some more study as well. Agreed?
Yes.
Okay, that that's where we were, that this one is going to need a little more thought put into it. Concerns about, you know, some level of gentrification with some afford more affordable housing there. That, you know, grad students and how all these things might work, work together. In this site. So any other thoughts about this catalyst area, the Clemson Triangle? Fran?
Yeah, if I remember, Bob, I think the point we ended on was discussion about whether that's an appropriate space for high-density student housing.
Yeah, so that would be, that would be the, that would be one of the key issues to.
Right.
To discuss if it is where, you know, they, you know, through these concepts on there, on this, on this site. But yes, to determine if high density and what 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 we mean by high density there. What would be appropriate on that site. Now, the concept here though, remember, was that by allowing some high density. That was how you were going to get a park and some workforce housing into this site. By allowing some level. So if, you know, probably the the consultant's. You know, recommendation and thought process there was to get workforce, to get open space and park here. You were, the give was going to have to be allowing for some high-value, higher-density development to also occur. But I think we need to stud- I think we need to look at that, you know.
And I think that, at least my thought was, I I I don't think that's an appropriate trade. And it might not be as simple. We talked about graduate student housing and then I think you made the point or maybe Elaine. that that seems to be the growth area. But, you know, to do that, the university would have to become a partner in the graduate student housing because it wouldn't generate enough money compared to the higher density primarily undergraduate housing. And I think the issue partly with that is, you know, you have high density undergraduate housing. And, and then what does that do to the other mix of housing there in terms of desirability? Anyway, that, that's, I'm pretty sure that's where we ended. We didn't have a decision.
Right. I mean, but also you got to look at, and, and again, I mean, there's, this is all opinion. You got to look at what's currently on that site. You know, some, some, uh, apartments that are coming to the end of their lifespan, some, um, some, you know, uh, older, uh, duplexes, you know, some things that are currently, currently run down in, in that area as well. Good, bad, or, or indifferent to those, to those, uh, things. There. So you got to consider what's there. David?
So I, 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 you know, I wasn't part of that conversation last week because I had to leave, but I mean, my thoughts about the Clemson triangle area is that again, if there's no one size fits all on, on, in that, in that disc, in that catalyst area. I mean, I think if, you know, development that would, that would emphasize higher density student housing along 93, along properties that front 93 with, with mixed use and commercial viable commercial. This, all right, where am I?
Yeah. 93 and 76.
93 and 76. All right. Yeah. I get it. Okay. Yeah.
93 campus.
That, that, that could be the place for high density student housing that then would maybe have mixed uses and underneath of it, along the 93 frontage. And then, um, then workforce and graduate student housing to the interior. Might be a possibility, even, even maybe student housing as, as, um, along 76, although access there is challenging. Um, but, um, but you know, that, that would be, uh, you know, that, and, and again, I guess that's what they're showing in a sense. But, um, but it's, it's the interior, it's the buffers to the interior that we want to be very careful about, right? So.
Yeah. And that's what their concept is along the edges, some mixed use student housing and then park and workforce. Uh, housing that becomes the buffer, um, lower density going into when you get to the art center and the entrance to that neighborhood.
But, but there are other bigger issues too. Again, I close my eyes and I see that stretch of 93 from 76 to 123 looking just like 93 looks like going towards central with student housing, lining 93, all the way welcoming people into campus. The traffic that means and other things. So I think there's a lot of other issues in terms of what happens, not only the neighborhoods, but that truly is all of our neighborhood. That's one of the entrances into Clemson. And I just don't, I can't see or accept sort of the, the repeat of that kind of housing along 93 towards central, those wonderful buildings across from Ingalls. Um, as the entranceway into Clemson University, in effect, we could have just a whole canyon from that whole stretch that looks like some downtown areas also. So I just, I don't like that.
But that's also the advantage of the new development process with a PD and architectural standards and those kinds of things that can, that can happen and have it happen in a different way because I bet you I can find as many people that would say our entrance to campus that has a old car wash, a not so nice, um, convenience store, gas station and a laundromat and some crummy apartments. Um, and a, and a, and a rundown old fraternity house isn't a great welcome either, you know? So I think, I think you could convince people that there's a better option there.
But I think, I think the people that live in those houses, use that laundromat, can't afford other housing, would disagree. And so anyway, we could go on and on with this, but I think there's a lot of caution needed for that area before we, we can decide on it.
David?
Again, it goes back to not what you do, but how you do it. Okay. And that's where the PD, the, 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 the process. I mean, yes, we don't want what's across from Ingles, right? And we control for that, right? We want development that has viable mixed uses and puts the laundromat back under student housing. I- i- in a place, but if, if we stay focused on what and not how, we're not going to solve this problem. We have to get more towards how we do things. And one of the things it's how about in this, in this area is the existing infrastructure is substandard. So any development in this, in this area has to bring the existing roads up to current standards, right? Uh, and, and I don't see that in this, in this plan, which would be one thing, right? So.
Other comments about this, about this area? Recommendation is that, uh, need to think, think about this one. And how we, how we, how we, uh, how and why, you know, we, we consider, um, any potential changes of, as to what might occur here. All right. Um, we are, we are at nine o'clock. Uh, the next one is the Clemson crossing. Again, this is the Bylow Food Lion Gold's Gym. Area. And the idea with this one is that it is, uh, almost solely geared towards workforce, workforce housing along 93. With some lower density townhomes, uh, as you move back into the neighborhood, um, there. Two concepts. One that on one side keeps a retail anchor basically on the, uh, on the Bylow site.
A- a- and again, to me, I'm interested in a hybrid between these two because I think there should be mixed uses. It shouldn't be one or the other. And, um, and you know, that we shouldn't be allowing a, a shopping center there, but that we should be putting more walkable, um, uh, urban oriented retail in there that has housing as a component of it.
Yeah. And there is on, on this side, there's a little bit of mixed use work for, mixed use for some of the workforce.
But again, you know, getting to have a viable commercial district, you can't have salt and pepper kind of sprinkled retail. Okay. Retail thrives on other retail. Okay. That there's has to be a significant, critical mass of retail. Otherwise it's always going to be auto centric drive to kind of retail, right? So, so you get the density of people that will use the retail. You get, you get sufficient continuity of retail so that there's walk by traffic from one retail establishment to another. So that when you're going to the CVS to buy your, your pharmacies, you're walking by the coffee shop and you pick up a coffee, a cup of coffee. Okay? So, you know, to me, there has to be, there's a high, there's a middle ground between these two, two options.
Yeah. And, and David, on the top option and the bottom option, all the red is retail.
Okay.
Commercial.
And I would say it should be on the other side of 93 too.
Yeah. Well.
Okay.
All right. So I think this one, a- again, this one's extremely complex, definitely needs, um, some additional thought. And, um, definitely one that the neighbors on both sides of 93 need to be involved in any, you know, additional plans. I see someone else who is in the meeting as me that I must've sent the link to has their hand up. Who, who is that?
Yeah, this is Tom. Sorry about that. Yeah. Hey, and, uh, I totally agree on the, on the mixed use, especially because you've got Cadillac Heights there. And that's walkable to, to retail, to services. Uh, like David said, uh, you know, drugstore. I do think we need to make sure we leave enough space retail wise for something other than a small retailer. Um, we're kind of running out of commercial nodes in the city of Clemson. You know, for example, uh, Publix would have not hap, would, you know, Publix was a rezone from actually multifamily from, uh, most of it was student housing. Um, and of course I think everyone would agree that that's been a good addition to the city. So I think we just want to make sure we carve out enough um, on both sides of the road to allow, uh, you know, a, a bigger use than just a, you know, a standalone, uh, CVS or anything like that. Make sure, um, you know, and, 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 and the face of retail is going to change tremendously. It's going to come back. Um, but it's going to be different than it, than it has been. And, uh, you know, otherwise you're going to be pushing those retail uses out on the edges of town. Um, so I just, you know, that, that's such an important area because it's kind of the, it's, it's the, uh, the choke point of three, uh, three major arteries. And, uh, you know, that, that's an issue with traffic. But if we have transit there and you've got the, uh, the, you know, the neighborhood, that, you know, all the neighborhoods there becomes walkable. So just wanted to mention that.
And that's what the bottom, the bottom, the bottom concept leaves a bigger space for some, for a bigger retail.
But, but I'm just saying, and that's fine. And I agree with that. I mean, all you have to do is look at the Publix in Charleston down on Lockwood Boulevard is an example of a bigger retail underneath housing. You know, you know, could we get a Trader Joe's in here? Could we get a fresh market? Could we get something that is, uh, uh, you know, a bit, a, a target, uh, you know, there's plenty of urban targets uh, with, with mixed uses and, and things like that. So I mean, yes, I agree with Tom on that.
Yeah. Shannon?
I know y'all are thinking pretty high level on this, and I just wanted to bring in a concept from the transit committee. Um, you guys are talking retail, you're talking, uh, connecting to the communities. One thing when we get a little further more in detail is really thinking about how these areas, this one and the, the triangle area are going to connect with the CAT system. Making that a key part of this and making the, the sidewalk and walkability and bikeability infrastructure a key part of how you're doing this as well and how it's connecting to those neighborhoods. If your intention is having retail that's easy to access by people in those neighborhoods.
Definitely. Uh, other thoughts about this catalyst area?
I think this is, uh, uh, the potential, if, if it's done right, the potential of this district is probably greater than in my opinion, any other district in the, in the city. Because, you know, 93, uh, you know, in terms of transit, in my opinion, 93 should be completely redesigned and have a, a transit lane, bike lanes. Uh, and narrow it down to two lanes of, of exclusive veh- vehicular traffic. And, and have a, a, you know, you know, a, a transit way, uh, you know, in, 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 embedded in it. And that then makes it safer for you to cross these, between these retail establishments that we, 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 we incentivize the use of transit. I mean, that to me, that's, that's the equivalent of a high speed line in Clemson, 93 for transit.
Yep. So. All right. The next, uh, the next one is the near north. So this is under the train trestle. The Calhoun area, uh, here on the right, you can see, I think that's the sewage treatment plant. You know, primarily there's some, there's some, uh, there's some, uh, families there too. But largely, um, student housing, um, now currently a lot of it's zoned RM3 and RM4. Thoughts on this area? Obviously transit would need to be considered here if the density of students, because that, you know, feeds into a choke point at 123 and college. Elaine?
I just wanted to say, I think we need to be mindful of the long-term residents that live in that. That's a, that's a historic neighborhood. That's exactly where, if you remember the, the village of Calhoun was located there and it wasn't until toward in the forties that things moved down College Avenue and we changed the name to Clemson. So there's still some, I think there are historic properties in there. A lot of it's still tied to the African-American communities. And I just think we want to be careful about any like over, just over generalizing what we go there.
Bob, um.
Yes, Lynn?
I live on Cochran Street, um, probably the only single family home on Cochran Road. And I too want to make sure that we preserve the historic, uh, sites there. At the rear of the, the Yandel home, you know, the old jail holding cell. And so there, there's some, some strategic planning that's going to, I think, need to go into preserving those spots. And making that a safer walking, uh, area to, traffic is really an issue around that area. So, so I have a vested interest in making sure this area is, is handled, um, you know, with, uh, with thought in mind of, of preserving the historic nature, but yet making it perhaps, uh, an area for, um, graduate housing, which there is a, a number of, um, on Essex, graduate homes, retiree, townhomes behind me as well, but we're sort of stuck right in the middle of, um, of a big density area of student housing and traffic is really an issue. Safety is an issue. Cat bus accessible. I mean, it's a, it's an area that is accessible, accessible to good transit, but I think it certainly can be improved. So.
So we've got some, some, some historic characteristics that we really need to think about here. And, and think about the right mix for this area, definitely thinking about, um, transit, traffic, walkability. For this area.
And there is some area, I think, for expanded retail and around Calhoun corners. And there's some rundown housing apartments. So I, I think it's a, an area that could be looked at as an extension of the commercial downtown district, uh, providing more walkable retail. And, um, so I, I think it's a a, a valuable spot for, um, a number of uses.
Okay. Other thoughts here? Are we generally okay with the idea? Ken?
Yes, I wholeheartedly agree with, uh, both Elaine and Leanne's comments there. I mean, actually this is also a gateway into Clemson. I mean, you could look at this, especially all the traffic on 123. So I think as was discussed in some earlier, uh, meetings, I'm going back to the folks, uh, uh, the, the consultants before in terms of making Clemson a destination and having something to attract, especially this historic piece about Calhoun. Uh, I think is very attractive for tourists and other folks to come. So I mean, that being an entrance, thinking about that in terms of interest and for tourists and others and to preserve this history of Clemson. I think this is what makes Clemson, Clemson and unique in regard to that historic, uh, area within the, the, the city. So I think that needs to be mindful as we move forward with this, uh, thinking about this catalyst area.
Okay.
The thing that has to be kept in mind, and I would agree with, I guess it was Lynn, uh, that commercial. If we ever get rail transit between Atlanta and Charlotte with a stop in Clemson and commuter rail. This area has the potential to really take off. Okay. As mixed use, commercial, in incredibly attractive residential, uh, areas, um, and for people. And for people who want to commute into Greenville, commute into, uh, Atlanta or Charlotte. Um, I mean, you know. I come from Philadelphia. There's a little town called Mannion that was basically a mill town, you know? Lower income, working class people. And, and it was along a commuter rail line and, um. And it's now one of the hottest places to, to, to live in, in the Philadelphia metropolitan area. And, and so I think we have to. In this area, we have to understand that if that ever comes, that's going to fundamentally trend. And it's this whole notion of transit oriented development, right? That, that, that is going to be incredibly valuable real estate. Uh, a- at some point in time, when that ever comes. We have now the infrastructure. If we have the real push, uh, in South Carolina gets ever on board. You know, I think there's a possibility. Uh, you know, I don't know when, that we will have commuter rail. Between Atlanta and Charlotte and we would be a logical stop on that commuter rail system.
Yeah, the, the, the plans for that. Um. If they happen, could be big, uh. Now I think if they're going to do that real high speed rail, it's going to be, it's not going to come through Clemson.
Well, I've heard that we're, it's toss up between Clemson and Greenville, but whether or not it's high speed.
Yeah.
Commuter rail, right? So there's.
They're talking high speed and if it's high speed, actually with the, the stop would be out in Anderson somewhere where they could get the times down because the high speed. That could come through Clemson. It's still better than what you have, but it's not like a, uh, it's not a ton more convenient than being in your own car.
Well, no, but I mean, this is the main line between Charlotte, Atlanta.
I, 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 I know I've, but I've been part of the planning process in the background with those and the potential routes. And, uh, been on that. And, um, yes, we are a possibility, but there is a major advantage and major speed increase by having it. It not pass, building a new line that actually goes out towards Anderson.
You're talking about a new separate line.
Yeah, the new separate line plan is what. A lot of people are leaning towards because of the speed advantage, but that's.
That's two different things, but you're right. That's inner city, that's inner city transit. That's not commuter rail, okay?
It would be, there would be minimal stops on that one.
Right, no, that's.
Atlanta, Anderson, Greenville, Spartanburg, Charlotte.
Right, right. No, I'm talking about commuter rail, kind of like what. North Carolina has implemented between Charlotte and the, and, and Raleigh. So, uh, that would have, you know, more frequent stops. Um. And be on the existing rail bed.
Yeah, yep. So, yeah, you're right. That does need to be in the, uh. But I won't say back, but probably mid, midsection of our minds as we move forward. Mm-hmm. Um, next one, the far north. So this is the extension. Um, as you, and I'm trying to. Get to the map here, eh, which we don't have. Uh, that's Paclet Milliken. So far, far north is actually, and I don't know why that's not on the map. We don't have a map there, but it's going out Clemson Street. So this would all be annexed. Potentially annex property that's not currently in the city. So out Clemson Street as it comes around and comes back into, um. Crosses the railroad tracks. Um, and goes by the Public Works. And then you make the, you can go straight to the Hardee's or right down to, um. The corner at Ingalls and the seven eleven there. Um, but that section. Um, is called the far north. They've talked about the far north as again, more family oriented. Um. Development out there if that annexation, you know, if annexation occurs and we have, um. You know, control over that area, but, uh, more non-student focused, uh. You know, more planned development, better, you know, design, kind of. Paclet Milliken, um, Patrick Square type. Development that, uh. You know, again, transit, transit oriented as well out there potentially. Thoughts there? All of these are a, you know. Kind, this is kind of a maybe, um, as that land is purchased and, um. Assembled, uh, if developers and landowners come to the city and ask to be annexed. That these would be the types of things that. We might find attractive. Thoughts? Ken, you still have your hand up? Is that just a leftover?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then, um. You know, eh, actually, this is transit oriented stuff, um, that we're getting into now, talking about a scramble at, uh. So if the Transit Committee, if y'all haven't been looking at this, um, talking about an all-stop scramble. Um, at, uh, one twenty-three and, and college. Um, Paclet Milliken, there's already a master plan, um, for that site. So there's not really anything for us to, um, think about there. And establish uptown. We've already made the recommendation that that will be, um. The first, you know, Charette redevelopment process, looking at uptown from, really from. Basically Strode up to college and, or up to Tiger Boulevard and, uh. Even include some of Tiger Boulevard there and, and really think about the lake, lake access. Um, extension to downtown and what that area could be. I think that's it. Um. Questions, comments?
Um, I mean, I'm all for studying all the sites. I think prioritizing and taking them in, in, in a proper sequence is going to be necessary, but I'm all for. Yeah, looking at all the sites.
Okay, um, all right. Well, we're, we're at nine twenty. So at, let's, let's do this. Um, as far as what we've kind of talked about generally with all of these sites that were, were. Okay with these sites, there's some that we think need. Uh, more thinking than others. Um, a lot of them, we're going to have to come up with a, a process and a prioritization. Um, but generally that we're recommending that we move forward. With, um. Thinking about these as our catalyst areas and going through. Uh, a process of, you know, additional input, um, for each of these catalyst areas as we outline. What, um. What they could become and again, the gives and takes and all the other stuff that we've been talking about, um, as we move forward. Any, any objection to that? All right, so. Our, as far as our next step, um. We probably need to talk about prioritization, right? Of how we're gonna. Eat the elephant one bite at a time. What the prioritization is there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop sharing so I can see everybody, uh, would be the next step. Um, so. That's where we'll go. I do, I, I, as, um, we were talking about next week and that being the first week, I'm not here next week. Um, so, uh, but you all are, um. More than welcome to, to meet with, without me. Um, I would ask, um, Fran to, uh. To step in at that point and obviously as, uh, we get Shannon on board, Shannon can, um, get a little more involved in, in keeping us on track and on task. And all of those kind of good things that I'm really not that good at. Um, so, uh. So yeah, so next week I would say that's where, that's where we should, um. Begin to look, uh, at the prioritization of these areas, which ones we want to tackle first. Okay, Jackie's asking in the chat, have we approved the white paper yet? Um. And again, uh, as council begins to think about that, we're, we're getting there in a piecemeal kind of way. Is how I would describe that. What would you say, Fran?
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. I think we're, I don't think we'll ever approve the entire white paper. I think we're going through the pieces of it and. The cumulative result might be approval of all parts of it, but I think it's one piece at a time.
Yeah. Um. Other comments or questions? Fran, are you comfortable acting as the, uh, chair next week?
Yeah, and, and Shannon can help me, I'm sure. But I guess that was the question. Do we want to actually meet next week? I see.
Yeah, or do we want a week off?
Yeah.
Just, I have no problem with, uh, obviously because I'm taking a week off, but, uh, does everybody else want a week off? We, we haven't had a week off yet.
It's fine. It's just that after next week I will be intermittent. I don't know what my internet connectivity will be. I'll be traveling from May seventh through the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
So if I have connectivity, then I'll be able to join, but if I don't, um, I may not be able to.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else have a strong desire to meet next week? All right, well, let's take next week off. And, uh, we'll hope for the best for David with his, uh, internet connectivity for those, uh, couple of weeks there. All right?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
What's that? Yep. So thought I heard someone say something. All right. Well, everyone have a good day. Good rest of your week. Let me know if you need anything. Um, Shannon, can you stay on and Andy stay on for a minute? All right, Andy, have you hit stop record?